Welcome to the Tempe City Council Formal Council Meeting, Regular Council Meeting, for March 22nd, 2018, here in the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. For those that are able, could you please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Next item is Meeting Minutes, Vice Mayor Armando Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move approval of Item 3A, 1 and 2.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Armando and seconded by Councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is the, is there a motion, the acceptance of Board and Commission Meeting Minutes?
I'd like to move for acceptance of Item 3B, 1 through 12.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Armando Savage, seconded by Councilmember Shapiro. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is the Reports and Announcements, and I'll come down to the podium. In Tempe, we are proud to be a city that is great to bike in, from the casual ride along Tempe Town Lake, to the commuter along Broadway Road, and to our commitment to being a bike-friendly city that has been recognized nationally. Today, we would like to celebrate Tempe's dedication to biking and also encourage our residents and visitors alike to think about biking a few extra days throughout April. That's why, together with our Streets Transportation Department, I am declaring April 2018 as a Bike Month in Tempe. I was wondering if Shelley Seiler here, she can come forward. Shelley is with our Transit Department, and we got Amanda, an officer, okay. I'd like to read a proclamation for the upcoming April Bike Month. It states, "Whereas Tempe will hold its 22nd Annual Tour de Tempe Community Bike Ride on April 8th and the 26th, Annual Bike-to-Work Day Event on April 18th, to celebrate biking in our community and encouraging bicycling as an alternative mode of transportation." And whereas Tempe has more than 175 miles of bike paths, including on-street bike lanes, multi-use paths, protected and buffered bike lanes. And whereas Tempe is designated a Gold Level Bicycle Friendly Community by the League of American Bicyclists for providing comfortable and convenient bike facilities such as multi-use paths, bike lanes, and bicycle bridges. And whereas, with the support of our community partners, including Arizona State University and the Tempe Bicycle Action Group, Tempe is well on its way to becoming one of the leading bike communities in the country. And whereas, having a strong bicycle culture is good for individuals, communities, and the environment, and improves our health, strengthens our neighborhoods, and contributes to a vibrant business economy, attracts quality employers and workers, reduces carbon emissions, and improves our quality of life. Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare as April 28th, 2018, as Bike Month Day in Tempe, Arizona. I do want to also recognize that, you know, as part of Bike Month, I mentioned in the proclamation, but Tour de Tempe is going to be on Sunday, April 8th. Registration opens at 7:30 a.m. with a ride starting at 9:00 a.m. at Kiwanis Park. And as I mentioned in the proclamation, the Bike-to-Work Day is Wednesday, April 18th. Nine locations around Tempe will host breakfast sites from 6:30 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. I hope you all will be able to make one of these great location events throughout the month, thanks to our transportation team, our commission members, our Transportation Commission members, and also our biking initiatives, as well as our staff, as Shelley, Sue Tate, Mackenzie Keller, work all very hard to put on these great events together. Let's just give them all a round of applause. Is Catherine here? Well, as a two-time traumatic brain injury survivor, Catherine Brewbaker has learned to walk and talk twice in the last five years. Is that Catherine there? No, Catherine. Catherine received a 2017 Bike Hero Award and continues to speak across the United States and advocates for brain injury awareness and collaborates with leaders in the brain injury community and other survivors. Today, she has brought a former NFL Seahawks kicker who has experienced his fair share of brain injury and surgeries. We want to thank you both for your courage, strength in the advocacy on this issue, and oh, there we go, I don't see him, isn't that here? Karen, you don't look like an NFL player. I guess Catherine's not here, but anyways, I do have a proclamation I would like to read with Catherine and her friend Chris Dugan regarding Brain Awareness Month in Ariz in Tempe. Whereas, traumatic brain injury is a public health problem that impacts a reported 1.4 million people in the United States annually. And whereas, in Arizona yearly, there's a reported 1,605 deaths, 9,004 hospitalizations, and 97,000 emergency departments visited, visits related to traumatic brain injuries. The Brain Injury Alliance of Arizona offers resources, programs, and education for all type of brain injury and falls encountered, accounted for 40.5% of the traumatic brain injuries and close to 20% of the injuries' unknown causes. And whereas, most traumatic brain injuries happen to children, adolescents, young adults, and people over the age of 75, with the highest risk being males between ages 14 to 24. And whereas, most traumatic brain injuries are predictable and preventable through the understanding of associated risk factors. Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby proclaim as March 2018, Brain Injury Awareness Month in Tempe, Arizona. This, I know Catherine's not here, but let's give her a round of applause for her, what she has accomplished over the couple of years. My next proclamation has to do with Water Safety Month. As we all know, Tempe is located in the Sonoran Desert, where temperature can reach over 100 degrees. We all value water, not only the importance to our economy, our quality of life, or the future, but recreational purposes as well. I don't know about you all, but in the middle of summer, you can either find me in a pool, hanging out at the poolside, or with my daughters, visiting one of the Arizona's many beautiful lakes. With that being said, it's always important to remember the safety that comes with the water fun. I do have a proclamation I'd like to present, or to issue. Whereas, Tempe proclaims the Month of May as National Water Safety Month and promotes water safety and provide education in preventing recreational water-related injuries, illness, and death. Whereas, Tempe regularly experiences temperatures greater than 100 degrees in the summer months, and the city has provided residents with various types of heat relief, including two outside pools, the Kiwanis Wave Pool, and several splash pads at city parks. And whereas, families coverage this summer, and cover the summer, where attend aquatic centers, pools, splash pads, water parks, and open bodies of water, it is vital to communicate safe practices to people all around the pool or water facilities. And according to the Centers of Disease Control, 10 people die from unintentional drownings every day, and about 1 in 5 people who die from drownings are children 14 and younger. And whereas, combining resources with the American Red Cross, National Recreation and Parks Association, Association of Pool and Spa Professionals, and the Governor's Office, Tempe will do our part to educate, promote awareness on this issue to ensure that families and residents will have a joyful water recreational activities. Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare as May 2018 as National Water Safety Month in Tempe, Arizona. I also want to mention that, per the Tempe City Charter, boards and commission appointments will be made later this evening as part of our formal meeting, and our council agenda, this appointment is listed under Items 5A1. That concludes my comments. The next item on the agenda is our Consent Agenda. All the items listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the City Council, unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public, may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk, and council members may remove any item for separate consideration. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker's card located at the back of the council chambers and give it to our deputy city clerk. I will call your name when it's your turn for public comment. The Consent Agenda is as follows: It's miscellaneous Items 5A1 through 5A9, awards and bids and contracts, Items 5B1 through 5B10, and resolutions, Items 5C1 through 5C5. Again, the agenda, any agenda item that is marked with an asterisk is a public hearing item, and it can't be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, could you please get my attention now? I don't see any. Is there any comments or discussion from the council on the Consent Agenda? Is like, any items removed for separate consideration? Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion on the Consent Agenda, with the exception of Item 5C4. It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Shapiro. Please vote. Stop pushing.
Can you please try to vote?
Nope.
Oh.
My button's green.
Okay, well, I can see on my screen that vote passed 7 to 0.
All right, that motion passes 7 to 0. Next is Item 5C4, Councilmember Shapiro.
Thank you, Mayor. For my second meeting in a row, I'm starting this trend now, in my waning months of my term on the council, of removing Consent Agenda items to say nice things about them. But 5C4, I just wanted to take this opportunity to once again thank the Virginia G. Piper Trust for their donation to the city of Tempe. And in this item, we're creating an IGA, working with First Things First, along with Kyrene and Tempe Elementary School Districts, to buy into the Quality First Program, which allows us to get quality ratings for our Tempe Pre classes. And so, again, just want to take the opportunity to thank Virginia G. Piper for their donation, $118,100, of which is going to help us get our ratings for our Tempe Pre classrooms. And with that, I'll move approval of Item 5C4.
It's been moved by Councilmember Shapiro, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Councilmember Navarro, thank you.
That motion carries 7 to 0.
7 to 0, yes, thank you.
All right, next is our Non-Cent Agenda items. All the items listed on the Non-Cent Agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard, but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Item 6A1 is approve the utilization of a two-year Western States Contracting Alliance contracts with Dell and Hewlett Packard Company to purchase personal computers, equipment, and related devices, software, and consulting services. Is there any comments or discussion from the council on Item 6A1? Is there a motion for Item 6A1? Moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. That motion passes 7 to 0. Next is Item 6A2, is award a five-year contract with five two-year renewal options for Remini Street Incorporated to provide third-party software maintenance and support services for PeopleSoft Financials and Human Services payroll. Is there any comments or discussion from the council on Item 6A2? Seeing none, is there a motion on Item 6A2? Moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Please vote. That motion passes 7 to 0. Next is Item 5C5, or no, is 6B1. The next section of our Non-Cent Agenda is the ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken on the items that I read. The second hearings and vote, the final votes for these items will be scheduled for Item 6B1 is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of the exclusive easement for water lines, fire hydrants, and appurtenances located on and across, appurtenances located on and across a developed parcel on the southwest corner of University Drive and 52nd Street. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for April 12th. This is a public hearing item, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this under Item 6B1? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, I'll close that portion. Any comments or discussion from the council on 6B1? Seeing one. Move on to Item 6B2, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of the sanitary sewer easement, a portion of the irrigation and public utility easement, and a portion of the easement for utilities located in the planned area development at the southeast corner of East Apache Boulevard and South Price Road. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for April 12th, 2018. This is a public hearing item, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this under Item 6B2? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, I'll close that portion. Any comments or discussion from the council on Item 6B2? Item 6B3 is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R3 to R2 for 22 West 9th Street Downzone, located at 22 West 9th Street. The applicants are Jeanette El Lucier and Gerald D. O'Neil. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for April 12th, 2018. This is a public hearing item. Is Ms. Lucier or Mr. O'Neil, are they here in the audience? Okay. Would you like to come address the council? You don't, you don't need to, it's just up if you want to.
Good evening, my name is Jenny Lucier. I live at 823 South Maple Avenue, and I'm wondering, because I'm on the next four as well, do I, can I just address these all at once?
Yes.
I don't have to. Okay. I think overwhelmingly, I would like to thank you for this opportunity. My husband and I have lived in the Maple Ash neighborhood for 32 years. It is our home, and we love it, and we've dedicated our lives to preserving it, and we are all about anything that helps us do that, and I think this is an important piece of that. I think it's in line with the existing character of the neighborhood, it's what this neighborhood is about, and, and so, we're very, very appreciative of the opportunity to move these applications forward and hope we can have your support on it. I'm open to any questions you may have. Oh, one other thing.
Sure.
So, because of some circumstances beyond our control, my husband and I won't be able to attend the meeting, the final public hearing on this, will be out of, out of state. So, now's your chance to answer, ask questions if you have any, I need to answer them now.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. I do have one card, Mr. Bill Bunger. Please come forward.
Good evening, council members. My name is Bill Bunger. I reside at 1936 East Cardiaco, Tempe, Arizona. I do own property in the Maple Ash area. I also live in Tempe, I mean, work in Tempe, and I also pay property taxes and sales tax in Tempe. So, with that being said, my concern, this, this battle's been going on for a long time. Mark, maybe you're the only one that's still on the council that's been part of this. I haven't stepped in front of this council on the zoning issue in years. Every one of you are new at this. It's been going on for over 30 years, two opposing groups, both neighborhood associations sanctioned by the city, and we go back and forth all the time. It's getting old. We're all getting older. Sooner or later, this is going to come to an end, and I understand this process fairly well. The biggest thing I'm opposed to, I'm not, neither one of these are next to my properties, which I'm thankful for. If it was, I would have a whole different tone tonight. My biggest problem with is using city tax dollars to pay for this process. If it's a worthy process, let the homeowner pay for it. It's a freebie that the rest of the citizens of this city are having to put the bill on. It's not that big a bill, but it's the principle of it, and I don't agree with that. What I do agree with is anybody having the right to do with their property what they want to do with it. So, I'm not going to be a hypocrite and say, they shouldn't do it, they can't do it. I wouldn't recommend it to anybody to downzone your property. You're giving the property back to you. You're giving up assessed value, you're giving up appraisal back. I just don't think it's a good idea, but being as I'm not doing it, that's all I'm going to say on that. My big problem is the tax issue. It's my problem, I do feel the train has left the station on this, I understand that, that's why I'm the only one here tonight, but I wanted to come forward and just voice my opposition strictly over the tax dollars being spent on personal property that the rest of the city doesn't benefit from. If there's any questions, I'd like to be gladly answer them, otherwise I'll sit down.
Thank you, Mr. Bunger. Any questions for Mr. Bunger? Thank you. Councilman Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question on the taxes with the staff. Downzoning from R3 to R2, what's the impact of taxes?
Mayor, council, the, the, the way the assessment works from the county, it assesses what's there now, so the zoning is not really relevant. If you developed according to R3, then obviously the assessment will go up, but as long as there's a house, for instance, sitting there, it's not really dependent on the zoning.
Doesn't matter if it's R3 or R2 right now, if it's a single house on that property, the assessment is still the same.
Right. What's built there is what is assessed, yes.
Vice Mayor?
Just, I just want to clarify, so just, I think, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, and it was my understanding as we move forward with these ones that are on the agenda today, this was a pilot program that we initiated, which has been closed as of the end of Jan, December, is that correct?
Yes, we do have a short presentation if you'd like us to give us, yes, but the, this initial opportunity closed in December, and we're just moving through the process now, and presumably subsequent to this, we would work with the council as to whether you wanted to open it up again another time, which is what we discussed last fall.
Well, yeah, I think it'd be good to see that, and I think it would be good to see what criteria will you be looking for to see if it was a successful program or not, right? I mean, so, I mean, I don't disagree, it is our residents' taxpayers' dollars, so I think that's something that we definitely need to consider. And I, and I completely understand, I don't know really sure based on what kind of information that we get back, and I know one of the questions I think I've heard is, you know, does it devalue any other properties that may be next to it that have different zoning? And I think the response has been no, you know, we don't expect that to happen, that's definitely not something that we would want to happen. And then, I just want to make sure too, once it's downzoned, it consistently stays with that property even if it's sold to somebody else. Is that correct?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, basically with any property, the...
Can you speak up, Mr. Weaver?
Certainly. It stays as long as they don't apply to rezone. At any point, any owner can apply for rezoning, so the next owner could apply for an upzoning as soon as they buy it, or it could stay back at R2, single family, for the duration.
But they, when they do buy it, it would stay at the, whatever current zoning is at?
Absolutely, yeah. Sale doesn't change the zoning.
Understood, that's what I just wanted to clarify. Fantastic, great.
Next, I have Mary Ortel.
Thank you.
Did I pronounce that correctly? No? Ortel? Help me out. Oh, wow. Early, okay.
I am here to simply, well, I, first of all, I represent, I don't do public speaking very well, so, excuse me, I am here representing all the owners of our property located at 821 and 821 and a half, South Maple. I am directly north of one of the properties being downzoned. I'm here to place on the record that we have no interest in ever downzoning our property, and we are voicing our opposition against the downzoning of these other properties in the neighborhood. We are against using city, human, and monetary resources. We, we don't agree with them being able to do this with no cost. If I wanted to come in and upzone a property, I would have to pay thousands and thousands of dollars. So, we are voicing our opinion against that. And we are also voicing our opinion that we do not have any interest in being zoned as historical. I attended a meeting several years ago that they were trying to do it, I voiced my opinion then, that we weren't interested. We have had lots of problems with the alley. We came to the council, I've been to the police, I've been to city managers about the alley that is to the north of our property, and nobody wants to listen, but yet, somebody wants to come and downzone their property, and they don't, they don't have to do anything. All I want is police protection, and to solve that problem, the city rented to Chick-fil-A the alley, the right-of-way, for $50 a year. So, I feel as a property owner that I have not had my property rights upheld for the quiet use of my property. So, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Next, Mark Klett?
I'm sorry, I have the wrong number.
Oh.
I want to speak on our property.
Okay.
I would like to redo the number.
Mr. Matt, is it Conway?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm talking about my properties.
You wrote down 6B. All right. Any other comments on Item 6B3? This is just the first public hearing. Seeing none, I'll move on to the next item, is Item 6B4, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R3 to R2 for the Windus Bell House Downzone located at 24 West 9th Street. The applicants are Jenny Lucier and Mr. O'Neil. She already spoke, is there any other comments for Item 6B4, 6B5? Mark, you have to do, Matt, I'll have to do them individually?
Please, because the address is listed. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on Item 6B4? Again, this is just first public hearing, seeing none. Item 6B5 is to introduce and hold the first public hearing about an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R3 to R2 for the Harris House Downzone located at 823 South Maple Avenue. The applicants are Jenny Lucier and Mr. Dan O'Neil. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for April 12th, 2018. Any comments from council on Item 6B5? Item 6B6 is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R3 to R2 for the Barnes House Downzone located at 1104 South Ash Avenue. The applicant is Jenny Lucier, Mr. Dan O'Neil. Second and final public hearing is scheduled for April 12th, 2018. Any comments or discussion from the council on Item 6B6? Seeing none, look to Item 6B7, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R3 to R2 for the McGinnis House Downzone located at 913 and 915 South Maple Avenue. The applicant is Jenny Lucier and Mr., oh, Maple Ash and the Conservancy FLC. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for April 12th, 2018. Any comments or discussion from the council on Item 6B7? Item 6B8 is introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R3R to R2 for the Rifkin Residence Downzone located at 1200 South Ash Avenue. The applicant is Mr. Adam Rifkin. On behalf of the Burton Rifkin Trust, the second and final public hearing is scheduled for April 12th, 2018. Any, like, is the applicant here, is, yes, please come forward. State unique place of residence for the record?
Good evening, my name is Adam Rifkin, and I live at 1200 South Ash Avenue, as I have the, over 50 years, and I want to thank you very much for giving our neighborhood the opportunity to do this. It's very important to me and my family that we have the opportunity to preserve what's left of our neighborhood. There are several developers who don't live in our neighborhood who come in and leave their droppings, and then we're left to deal with what they've left behind, and I feel this is a great opportunity for us as homeowners, as well as residents of the neighborhood, to protect and preserve what we have. So, once again, I just wanted to thank you, and I am very grateful.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing item, is anyone from the council like to address Item 6B8? Does anyone from the council like to address item 6B8? CNN, item 6B9 is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R3R to R2 for the Klett Residence Downzone located at 1136 South Ash Avenue. The applicant is Mark Klett and Emily Mathias Klett. On behalf of the Klett Mathias Living Trust, the second and final public hearing is scheduled for April 12, 2018. Mr. Klett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mark Klett, 1136 South Ash. We've lived there for 27 years. I want to thank the city council and the city departments for allowing us this opportunity to downzone. I've invested a lot of money in my property. I'm doing that right now. I'm building onto my studio. I'm a photographer. It's our plan to live there for a long time. When my neighbors and I were given the opportunity to downzone, that gives me peace of mind. I don't want to invest a lot of money in my property, which I have, only to realize that next door is going to be a multi-story apartment building looking down on my backyard. And that's happened two doors down from me. If my neighbors are saying, we want the opportunity to preserve our neighborhood, and they're doing it, I'm happy to do it with them. We can support each other. And so by this measure, we're going to support the lifestyle that we've bought into, that we've paid money for, that we've raised our families into. I'm grateful for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Navarro?
Just a question, staff, has, was the opportunity to downzone from R3 to R2 also to R1, or is it just to R2?
Mayor, council, just to the R2 zone.
And why not R1? If they wanted to choose to do that?
Well, we tried to keep it a little bit concise, but the R2 allows for a potential of like an accessory dwelling unit type of situation, which is more in keeping with the neighborhood and preserving some of the property value. So we thought it would just be simpler to maintain that zone, plus it's more consistent with what's in the area.
So with the R2, they can have 10 dwelling units? 10, they can have, with R2, they can have 10 dwelling units on the property?
Mayor, Councilmember Navarro, that's correct. 10, up to 10 dwelling units per acre.
What does that do if a property was sold and someone wanted to go in and put 10? What is 10, could that be a small apartment?
The typical size lot in the Maple Ash neighborhood for a R2 zone, it would probably allow two dwelling units, based on the density ratio. So yes, preserving the main house and then having a second unit on the property.
I just want to add something for clarification, staff, either Chad or Ryan. My understanding, when we did this pilot program, this was offered citywide. It just wasn't specific to the specific area. Is that correct?
That's correct. We've made the offer available to all R3R and R3 zone properties to downzone specifically to R2 designation.
Okay. All right. Next item is item 6B10. It's to introduce the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R3R to R2 for the 1203 Ash Avenue Downzone located at 1203 South Ash Avenue. The applicants are Matthew and Jackie Conway. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for April 12, 2008. Mr. Conway?
Thank you. My name is Matthew Conway. I live at 1203 South Ash. I've lived there for over 20 years. I have a family that I have, two daughters, they're living in the house along with me. A couple things. First of all, I'd like to address what I keep hearing over and over about the cost. I'm trying to voluntarily downzone my house. I think there, I'm not sure, and I also had to sign an affidavit that said I would not basically go after the city for any economic loss for the downzoning that would occur. So economically speaking, I'm not, if someone is alleging that, that there isn't, I'm not paying for that downzoning, that's true. But on the flip side of it is, if I'm paying to upzone my property, then I'm probably trying to make a profit off my property. So there should be probably cost associated with that, because the city's going to be paying for, what, additional services? I don't know, sewer, parking, who knows, right? So I'm downzoning. I don't know why, that there's this argument that there needs to be a cost with the downzone. Secondly, along with my neighbor, Mark Klett, I haven't put investment into my home. I'm a little concerned about what I see happening in the area. I also have a quality of life issue. As I said, I have a family in the area. I want a safe place for my family to grow. I want to see some value in that. I don't want to lose value because I have a neighbor next door, or I could have a large development next door. So, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff, what is the cost to either upzone, downzone? And then what does that, what does that pay for? What does it go towards?
Mayor, Councilmember Navarro, that the cost for a zoning map amendment to change the zoning district is approximately $2,700. There's a fixed rate of the fee, and then there's a cost of per acreage of the total lots or properties that you're zoning. What we also waived in the process was the requirement of processing a development planner review, which typically comes with a proposed development you're planning to do. In this case, you know, the applicants are not asking for development, so we waived that requirement. That typically has a fee involved with it, too, but obviously, those applications are not coming forward with design of a project. And then the city, Community Development Department, also incurs costs with providing public notice, hearing advertising for these applications. And we do that for all of our applications that go to public hearings for the Development Review Commission and the city council.
And just a follow-up question. When's the last, I mean, when have we downzoned or upzoned residential property? Can you remember?
I believe there was an effort a while ago when there was an unsuccessful attempt to seek a historic overlay designation in this area. The mayor at that time had asked, provided residents an opportunity to come down to community development, submit an application to voluntary downzone your property. At that time, no one took us up on that offer. But this opportunity came and was presented last year with the city council about a potential option to consider if properties wanted to downzone to their existing zoning density designation.
Basically, we have no, we have no fees being paid either to do upzone or downzone within X amount of years, I guess?
I'll add maybe that over history, over time, in the maybe the 50s, 60s, and 70s, the city actually came in and zoned people's property. When we have changes in ordinances, new zoning district designations, the city took a more liberal approach in identifying where they wanted to project those zoning and density districts. This happened to the Maple Ash neighborhood in the early, or late 50s and early 60s, when the general plan projected something maybe different than what's current in that neighborhood. I think we talked about at that time, I wasn't there, obviously, but in the 60s. But they talked about extending the downtown environment into portions of that Maple Ash neighborhood at that time. And that's why you see the different zoning district designations today of CC zoning, R3, R3R, R2 zoning in that neighborhood.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is item 6B11. To introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R3 to R2 with the Gitlis Douglas downzone located at 1206 South Ash Avenue. The applicant is Karen Gitlis and Philip Douglas. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for April 12, 2018. Would Karen or Phil, would you like to make your statement?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I agree with, I'm Karen Gitlis, 1206 South Ash Avenue. My husband, Phil, and I have lived there for 38 years. I agree with Jenny wholeheartedly on her comments about, you know, the job of my life and the, also, the community of my life. And I am so proud that so many, there has been such a good showing for this opportunity. Thank you from the bottom of my heart and Phil's for this opportunity to downzone multiple properties, I believe 12 altogether, to the R2 zoning category in the Maple Ash neighborhood. We wish to do this to make our properties appear less desirable as fodder for maxed-out multifamily development. We have noticed over the years that the R3 and R3R zoning categories are favorite targets for this type of frequently opportunistic property assemblage. We do not fear loss of value in our properties. Regarding the housing market, sales prices appear to be based more on the condition, size, and number of the structures on the property than on its zoning classification. This theory is borne out time and again by the prices properties actually sell for. The houses in Greater Maple Ash have for many years been prized by families looking for a home. Sales and rentals are often completed by nothing more than an owner posting a sale on the front lawn, a sale sign. An interesting phenomenon that owners of these houses have noticed during this lengthy process is people from outside the neighborhood cruising through and stopping to read the large red four-by-five public hearing signs. They ask what the signs are for and express relief when they learn that the owners wish to preserve their homes to the extent that may, that that may work using the downzone process. As we chat, we learn that many of these folks have lived in the neighborhood or cherished its character over the years. We are preservation-oriented and have been for the better part of four decades as we've lived in our house. The city as a larger community, and to some extent, the Valley of the Sun, want to fondly remember these homes and this neighborhood for the memories it represents to them. We hear that week in and week out. The familiarity of the community and its history as we all move forward in an uncertain future, we think this is critically important, and we are thrilled, it is with great pleasure, that we see we are finally getting some traction from the city on this point. You have given us something to sink our teeth in. It has too often been an uneven battle, the development community getting all kinds of benefits, and we're just stuck having another PAD crammed down our throats without, and frequently, in fact, never coming out as what was first pitched. So I didn't want to get into that. I'm sorry, I looked up from my script. But we look forward to more opportunities such as this in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gitlis. Councilman Navarro?
Just curious, I don't know if the staff or anyone who went through the process, but you said 10 years ago, we offered this before, but we had no one take advantage of it?
I'm trying to remember the young man who was development director then.
Anaradian?
Yes, Chris Anaradian, and I spoke to him about it. I wanted to try to do that. I had no idea what it entailed, and neither did Chris Anaradian. I was kind of shut down.
Yeah.
That's what happened at that time.
Now we can't, she was her property. All right. Next item is item 6B12. It's to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R3R to R2 for Sandsted Downzone located 1117 South Ash Avenue. The applicant is Virginia Sandsted, on behalf of the Sandsted Family Trust. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for April 12. I know Virginia's here. She's making her way up.
I'm Virginia Sandsted, and I live at 1117 South Ash Avenue. I really don't have a thing to add to what the previous applicants have said. I do want to express my appreciation for this opportunity with the city. It seems like it's a gift. Any questions?
Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is our second public hearing is the final adoption. Will be considered now. These items will be read and introduced on March 8. They were read and introduced on March 8, 2018. A vote will be taken this evening on this. We actually have one item under ordinance and items for second hearing and final adoption. It's item 6C1 is to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Tempe City Code, Chapter 2, Article 3, Departments by adding a new subsection 2-13D relating to the combination of functions under the Community Development Department. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6C1? Could you get my attention? CNN, I'll close that portion. Any comments or discussion from the council or a motion on item 6C1? Moved by Councilmember Keating. Seconded by Councilmember Shapiro. Please rule. That motion passes 7 to 0. Now I'm going to go a little bit out of order. I know, I saw Ms. Brubaker come in. I'm going to come down and read a proclamation on Brain Awareness Month, Brain Injury Awareness Month. I'll be right down there. All righty, as I mentioned earlier, and I know, thank you so much for coming, Catherine, and I want to also thank Mr. Dugan, thank you so much for coming as well. As I mentioned earlier, as a two-time traumatic brain injury survivor, Catherine Brubaker has learned to walk and talk twice in the last five years. Catherine received a 2017 Bike Hero Award and continues to speak across the United States and advocates for brain injury awareness and collaborates with leaders in the brain injury community and other survivors. Today, she has brought a former NFL kicker for the Seahawks, who has experienced his fair share of brain injuries as well as surgeries. We want to thank you both for your courage, your strength, and your advocacy on this issue. And if Catherine and if Chris, if you can come forward, we'd like to present you with a proclamation on the Brain Injury Awareness Month for Tempe, Arizona. And it states, whereas traumatic brain injury is a public health problem that impacts a reported 1.4 million people in the United States annually, in Arizona, yearly, there is a reported 1,605 deaths, 9,004 hospitalizations, and 97,882 emergency department visits related to traumatic brain injuries. And the Brain Injury Alliance of Arizona offers resources, programs, and education for all types of brain injury. And whereas falls accounted for 40 and a half percent of traumatic brain injuries and close to 20% of injuries have unknown causes. And whereas most traumatic brain injuries happen to children, adolescents, and young adults, and people over the age of 75, with the highest risk group being males between ages 14 through 24. Whereas most traumatic brain injuries are predictable and preventable through the understanding of associated risk factors. Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby proclaim as March 2018 as Brain Injury Awareness Month. Ms. Brubaker, could you please come forward, Mr. Dugan? Thank you. And I have to say, I've been in Washington, DC, visiting with our congressional delegation, and I run into Catherine in the hallways of Congress, and she does a fair amount of lobbying on behalf of the brain injury community. So thank you, Catherine. All right, with that, we now go to current events and council announcements. Councilmember Keating?
Lovely for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Cubey? Microphone.
First of all, I express my condolences for Elaine Hertzberg's family and the tragic death that occurred here last Sunday. The family, friends are still reeling from this, as is the city, as is the whole nation. And I know that she was often seen in Bike Saviors and was a member of the bike community as well, so I just want to express condolences. And I also wanted to talk about another really dramatic, awful thing that happened in Tempe a few weeks ago, and we had, you all saw the video, very disturbing video of an anti-Muslim group that came into our Islamic Cultural Center and desecrated, desecrated the mosque, and they brought children along with them to spew their hate. And it was very disturbing, as many of us saw from viewing that video. So in response, the council on American Islamic relations and...
perspective about what to expect when they go to high school, but if you're actually out there looking for maybe a summer job or just a volunteer opportunity at the library, bring your resume, you will be able to get hired on the spot. So spread the word, basically working with 16 to 24-year-olds.
Councilwoman Granville.
Two things, Mayor, first one is, this was a couple of years ago, we had the Pot of Gold Concert, there were some issues that happened, and we tasked the fire department with coming up with better ways to judge crowds. At the weekend, we had our first three-day concert, three-day concert, I just want to give a shout-out. Not here, but to Hans from the fire department, he has spent two years now reading every book and becoming the expert in the valley on this, because we do so many high-density, you know, events at Tempe Beach Park. And so I just want to thank him for his work, I hope Chief will forward my thanks to him. He is, he has truly become an expert in the valley on this and just took this on, and that's why we can now with confidence reopen the park to have these sort of events again and know that people are going to be safe, and I really appreciate that. The other one, not quite as many people, but as much fun, and that's the dragon boat races that are this weekend, if you've never, you actually did it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hit my knuckles on the side of the bed.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's.
It's fun.
It's fun and it's entertaining, and it's just the right kind of quirky spectacle that, that you can just go out and goof off and have a good time and enjoy it. Maybe someday again we'll have another Tempe boat.
There you go. Councilmember Shapiro.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be this Saturday down at the State Capitol, and I know lots of folks will be as well for the March for Our Lives after the shootings in Parkland, Florida. Some really bright and active high school students created this organization, which is just a, just over a month old, and they are organizing marches across the country that will be taking place this Saturday. There will be marches in other parts of the state as well, but the big one in the valley is going to be at the State Capitol in Phoenix. I know folks are going to start getting down around nine o'clock, 10 o'clock is when the speaking program starts, and 11 a.m. is when the march will begin, and they expect to wrap up around noon. This is going to be, there's going to be a lot of people there, so I highly encourage folks to use light rail to get down there. Remember, you can take your bicycle on the light rail and then bike from the light rail station, because it is a little bit of a walk. And then in addition to that, next Wednesday, you might know that there's a group called Arizona Educators United, which is only a couple of weeks old and already has 35,000 members, mostly teachers across the state, who are calling on folks at the State Capitol to adequately fund our school system. And so there's going to be a march next Wednesday, the 28th, at the State Capitol as well. That's going to be teachers and supporters of education from around the state, including folks from Arizona Save Our Schools and the Arizona Education Association. So I encourage folks to continue to stay active, to advocate for things, not only in our city, but for our education system as well, and so there's two great opportunities to express your activism in the next few days.
Thank you. First, I want to congratulate two of my council colleagues. I want to congratulate Vice Mayor Robin Adonis Savage for her recent election, reelection to the Tempe City Council, so congratulations, as well as my colleague, Councilmember Lauren Cubey, and new Councilmember-elect Jennifer Adams. So congratulations, look forward to working with all of you and the entire council as we continue to move forward the great city of Tempe that we all know and love and appreciate, as you heard tonight in so many different aspects, not only in our issue review session, work-study session, but in our formal council meeting. I also want to echo all the events that are happening. Tempe is very busy this weekend, pretty much busy a lot of weekends, you know, we have, we have the dragon boat races this weekend, as Councilmember Granville mentioned. We have spring training, last two games for the Los Angeles Angels Anaheim are tomorrow and Saturday, and regular season starts obviously April 1st, and we wish the Angels much success as well as our D-backs. And also, you know, can't forget the new Innings Music Festival, it's a three-day music festival that will take place at our Tempe Beach Park, and our renowned, known Tempe Festival of the Arts on Mill Avenue, which starts tomorrow at noon. Make sure you come down, some great artists, it's grown over the years, it's really exciting to be a part of this community. I do want to wish, send my condolences and thoughts and prayers with Elaine Hertzberg. It's a tragic incident that did happen, and our thoughts and prayers are with her family and her friends. With that, I'll conclude our comments, and now I'll go into public appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed on this agenda. Matters discussed by the public during public appearances cannot be discussed by the city council unless they are specifically listed on this agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, speakers' visual aids and recorded tapes are not allowed. Members of the public shall refrain from making any personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending this meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, clapping, stomping of feet, yelling, or any other similar demonstrations are also prohibited. Violations of these rules may result in the removal of the council chambers. Under item, Public Appearances A1, under schedule, we do have one scheduled, Ms. Riggs, welcome back. Please state your name and place of residence for the record, as you have before, and thank you.
My name is Patricia Riggs. I was here two months ago and referred to some people for remedy of parking in front of my house by renters and drug dealers and drug addicts, and, and I'm in the same place. They're not willing to make an exception for me, and so I need somebody who has a little more power than I do to look into this and maybe override exceptions have been made to the ordinance of no parking in front of people's homes, the neighbors next door have it. I've had it for years. I let it go to try to mitigate with these people. You can't with the renters, they just move out, people who have lots of issues. The police are aware of this, I've had one officer try to get it, when they found out this was going on, tried to get it for me, that officer was turned down. There was another police officer that's done his best to try to cite people that parked there that aren't supposed to, but the neighbors just use their little pass and park in front of my house whenever they feel like it, and then all the other visitors and things park in front of their house, and, and I'm stuck. Yesterday, they painted red in front of the fire hydrant, everybody knows you can't park there, that's on one side, and three feet on the other side of my driveway, that doesn't help, they, yesterday they were over that. I couldn't see, I was barreling out of my driveway at maybe two yards an hour, barely moving and trying to see around, can't get out, and, and we have no sidewalks, and I'm barely, good thing I was barely moving, because somebody on a bicycle just blows by me, I could have hit him. It's extremely dangerous, I can't see. I'm also handicapped, I have no place to walk. If I don't have cars in front of my house and the neighbor doesn't have them, I can at least walk there. I've seen horrible things happen with handicapped people, and chairs turning over because we have, there's no place to go. At least this is a place that they can turn in, I've helped them before. This is not new, I'm not asking for something new, I've had no parking for years. I let it go to try to mitigate and try to get along. I'm an honorable woman, I'm a good neighbor, and a good citizen, and I'm trying to get along, and all they do is victimize me and keep on and keep on. So for traffic safety, for handicap access, for a precedence that has been set, I'm asking that somebody just let me move the no parking sign from my neighbor's yard to mine, where it's been for years, from the west side to the east side. There's not going to be any blowback, I keep telling them, I'm trying to get it done, and they know. And I was just told this month, when I talked to somebody who could have parked in their house and didn't, "Well, I don't see no parking here." I really need your help. I don't know if it takes a vote, I don't know if it takes a person, but I really need your help. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Mr. Mathen, please get with Ms. Riggs before we leave, thank you. That's the only item I have under schedule. Next, I have unscheduled public appearances, I have a stack of cards, I'm going to read them, call them off as I receive them. Mr. Jay Williams, please state your name and place of address, residence, for the record.
My name is Jay Williams, I'm a 25-year continuous citizen of the city of Tempe. I am not on board with your smart water meter project, I'm the guy that's been sending you the emails about that. This equipment that you installed without my permission, coupled with any reasonable data mining software, is an outrageous invasion of privacy, outrageous. So I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, your staff told me that you were going to be taking this up at the planning or this work session tonight, and maybe they didn't want to do that, or they were wrong or something. But I want to see an opt-out policy, so that a water person, a user like me, can say, "I don't want this, I like my privacy, I think I have property rights," and I want the city of Tempe just to give me an analog meter like the old days. So I appreciate if you would consider developing an opt-out policy, first chance you get, and take the meter off my property even sooner. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ruben Casio. Casio.
My name is Ruben Casio. I live in 2015 University Drive in Tempe. I live at 2015 University Drive in Tempe. And I just wanted to thank the city council about the issues related to the Tempe Mobile Home Park. We hope that you can continue supporting us. Thank you very much for everything that you do to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Salvador Reza.
Hi, my name is Salvador Reza. What he said was, he wanted to thank you because things are happening thanks to your, your intervention, one way or another. And what I wanted to say is that we had a meeting with the Treehouse Properties finally after almost three months into this issue, and it was a pretty good meeting. They basically agreed to remove all the liens and to forgive the debt of the, of the trailers they own. They already forgave one lien today, and they're going to have a couple of Saturdays where they're going to have a public notaries doing, doing the work, so that's good. The only issue that we believe is still outstanding is where we asked that the developers and the trailer homeowners come up with compensation for the relocation. Everybody sticks to the Arizona law, which is $1,800, and that's it, if they abandon the trailers or, or the money that they give for moving. The thing is, we have cases in Austin, Texas, and San Antonio, and one that almost happened, but the residents were not moved in Flagstaff. And then we have the case of Mesa Royale, where Chicano por la causa will compensate them according to federal guidelines. They don't want to budge on that one. We agreed to continue discussing this, and they sent the response to a request in writing today, I don't have it yet, he just sent me a, a message that they had sent it to us. But most of the problems are almost resolved, there's one main issue, and that is compensation issue. And what I told them was that it's not, some of those people have been there 20 years, 25 years, and then just throwing them away with $1,800 is not, is not just, and is not fair. And I know this is not about, you know, usually this is about business, it's not about fairness, but I think the city council has the ability to influence these negotiations, and I hope they continue, and thank you to Lauren Cubey for being there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reza. No comments, we can't, because it's not agenda, afterwards you can. Just so everyone knows, we can't, under items that are unscheduled public appearances, we cannot interact and ask questions of the individual speakers. Next is Cindy Flores. Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Cindy Flores, I'm also from 2015 University Drive in Tempe. Again, kind of like my neighbors have done, I wanted to just say thanks for all the help that you guys have been providing for us. I know, as well, thanks for helping us get for Treehouse to come talk to us. That was really important for us, because we wanted our voices to be heard by the company, and we finally got that this week with the meeting with them, and so that's why we want to thank you as well, because we were having that issue. I mean, like he said, like Salvador said, there's a lot of things that they did, like, do for us, they hurt us, but there's still some things that we're still discussing or going to continue to discuss with them, but overall, we just really want to say thanks, because you guys have been helping us very much, and I'm not sure what we'd be without your help there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dr. Sylvia Herrera.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Sylvia Herrera with the Barrow Defense Committees on the Tempe Mobile Home Park, and I'm here to mention the, the whole displacement of these residents that was going to occur or is going to occur, as well as families that were actually living there in small cottages and small apartments on that property. So it's not just these residents of the mobile home, but it's also other residents. And it seems to be a continuing issue that's, that's coming up here in Tempe in regard to the closure of trailer parks. We had sent a letter a couple of months ago in regard to this, and we're extremely concerned about the elimination of the affordable housing in Tempe. This is not, and we're talking about the private development and the elimination of affordable housing. This is not a private matter, this is a public issue that you're talking about and that we're talking about, and we're raising this issue to you. It's many parks that have been closing in Tempe along the light rail, and there's, I'm sure there's others that are on that list to be closed as well. I think we all have that responsibility to address this issue, whether it's private developers, whether it's city council, and the residents that are being affected by the lack of affordable housing here in Tempe. Given the present situation of the lack of affordable housing, I think that the city council should take proactive steps to address this issue and explore different ways to address this issue, including whether it takes a resolution, whether it takes a moratorium, whatever it's going to take to look and study the issue of This is not a private matter, this is a public issue that you're talking about, and that we're talking about, and we're raising this issue to you. It's many parks that have been closing in Tempe along the light rail, and there's, I'm sure there's others that are on that list to be closed as well. I think we all have that responsibility to address this issue, whether it's private developers, whether it's city council, and the residents that are being affected by the lack of affordable housing here in Tempe. Given the present situation of the lack of affordable housing, I think that the city council should take proactive steps to address this issue, and explore different ways to address this issue, including whether it takes a resolution, whether it takes a moratorium, whatever it's going to take to look and study the issue of how Tempe is going to address affordable housing. It's a critical issue that you have before you, and there's an urgency, not only for these people that were asked to leave in 180 days, and just the other night, they were given properties that they can relocate to, and it's outside of Tempe. Let's call this what it is. This is urban apartheid. You're removing working poor people from Tempe and asking them to not even live in Tempe anymore. That's what's being created, and I don't think that's the kind of city that you want to be. I think that you should continue to have that image of being a diverse community, and not remove people that have contributed to the city for many, many years. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address us? Could you please come forward, state your name and place of residence for the record?
My name is Maria Gasca, and I'm here from Tempe Mobile Home Park, too. Like, Sylvia already addressed about, when we talked to the, to the treehouse owners, that they just mentioned that we can move to the other properties and got six months of free rent and everything. We don't even know about it, we only have three more months to decide. But one other thing, they sent the list in an email, they sending us to apply to another mobile home park in Tempe, that it's on Apache and McClinta, but by my understanding, this place is about to close, so why they sending the list with this property, when we already know that they already, people from the, from the mobile homes are already received the letter too, because they're going to close the lien for the same hours, and the rest of them are too far from here. And another thing, we asked for a extension for another year or so. We still need to hear about that, if we're going to have more time, because now they spend, they spend so much time waiting for, to come and talk to us, then now we are so short in time to, because now, now they tell us that we can sell our property, because first we have to use the right of refuse, that we have to offer to them first, before we sell it. Now, they say we can sell it, but now the time is so short, like if we want to sell it or anything, you know, because we were not looking into that, because they say we cannot sell, because we had to pay like some kind of fine, a thousand dollar fine, or offer it to them before we offer it to other people. So we just want to see if we can get an extension, just to be able to do, or like another people like me, or, my daughter now can apply for a house here in Tempe, but she still need to work another year, because it's her first year working, so we cannot apply for, to buy any property right now, because we don't, we don't have the money and the time that they need. And thank you so much for being listening to us. Have a good night.
Is anyone else in the audience wishing to address us? Could you please get my attention, under unscheduled public appearances? Yes, Mr. Bunker?
Just to reunite real quickly, what Karen was mentioning, what Chris was mentioning, there was a historical district brought forward, and it was voted down, and that's basically what started our group. If you want to talk historical preservation, I can fill up your seat in this room. You need to understand and realize Maple Ash area, 70% of the property is owned by somebody other than lived there. 70% of the property is owned by, in other words, on the tax rolls, the tax address that is billed to is not in that neighborhood, 70%. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to address us, under unscheduled public appearances? Could you please get my attention? Yes, Darren. Oh. Do you want to speak? No, go ahead.
My name is Darren Price, I live on Roosevelt Street, I got some notes. I wanted to address the council about the event we had last Sunday, this past Sunday, involving autonomous vehicle and a pedestrian. I just think that not too many people in this room realize that this has never happened before. I'm not talking about just in Tempe, never before have we developed this technology to take an object, a machine, and let it interact and move around freely in our own human environment, without any outside control. And it had one job, and it didn't do it. This has never happened before in history. This, the import of this, I think, is being lost on a lot of people, they're looking at it as just a regular traffic accident. And this has to do with much more important things about, to me, about things like free will, and our interaction with our environment, with our technology, and which direction we want to go with our technology, and how we're going to use that technology to make our lives better, or easier, or faster, or how it's not going to work, and what do we do in situations like this? Liability, criminal actions, how are we thinking in terms of the future, all the possible scenarios? Are we even prepared for that? I just wanted to point out that for a few people in this room, what, in terms of legislation or lack thereof, or regulations, what some people in this room do next, or don't do next, will literally shape the future course of the direction this technology takes, and its interaction we have with this technology. And I just, the other thing I wanted to point out is, too many people are looking at this as a failure to obey traffic laws, but for me, it's a failure of our humanity.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to address us, under unscheduled public appearances? Please get my attention. Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. We are adjourned.